Evening, everyone. The City of Grand Haven Special City Council Works of August 21st, 2023 is hereby called to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Fertz?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
McLaughlin?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
McNally?
Here. We're here this evening to review a proposed economic incentive policy prepared for staff. Is there a presentation, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay. Are you doing it?
Yep, I just have a couple of brief slides before we get into the dialogue. So for good to get started, the proposed policy draft that's before you today is a result of an effort between my office, the Finance Director of the City Planner, in conjunction with Elizabeth Butler from the Chamber in her capacity as our Economic Development Liaison. So in preparing the document that's before you, we've read through dozens of other community policies, both in Michigan and out of state, in order to review best practices that we felt could be appropriate to fit within the Grand Haven community. We also conducted reviews of this document with other city offices, our partners at Housing Next, the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, as well as the EDC and BRA Board. This policy is not intended to be prescriptive. Instead, it's to provide guidance in a matrix for council to utilize when reviewing individual applications for abatements and incentives. There are obviously many different philosophies in regard to abatements. Approval of this policy would not guarantee or lock us into providing incentives or abatements, nor does it limit the authority of council to approve applications that do not meet the needs, meet all the criteria that is outlined within the policy. But we feel that overall a policy could assist in decision-making, in the decision-making process, as we assess viable projects that could help build our tax base in the future. So we included this slide to provide a brief clarification regarding abatements in the greater context of why we may still consider abatements even in the fiscally constrained environment that we're in. So we believe it's important, especially for those watching, to understand that these abatements do not make an applicant tax exempt. What the abatements are actually for is when a developer commits a large capital investment to a property, we will not immediately tax at the higher assessed rate. Instead, we allow a time period of reduced taxation where the developer can recover some of the investment they had made. So once the period has ended, they will be taxed at the higher assessed rate. Property tax abatements do not reduce a property tax bill to zero, but they can provide significant enough benefit for developers to make a project feasible. And we're tasked with weighing the benefit of the investment against the delay and increased tax benefit. So just quickly, over the next few slides, we're going to briefly highlight some of the key aspects of the policy that's, as it's relevant to your eventual deliberation. It's also important to note that although five years is the minimum requirement for review per our redevelopment-ready community standards, we do plan to conduct annual reviews of the policy as we identify areas that possibly need to be revisited as we go. So while we're open to the consideration of utilizing this tool, we do acknowledge that we aren't necessarily positioned to continuously permit endless tax abatements. We're proposing that the total of all granted abatements must be maintained at under 7.5% of the taxable value of the city. So as abatements fall off, more opportunities would then become available. It's important to also note that within this calculation, we did exclude the DDA TIF. So if in 2024, the city's total taxable value is 750 million, then we would allow for up to 56 and a quarter million in incentives or abatements.
Can I ask, Ashley, if you didn't exclude the downtown TIF, any idea what the percentage we'd be at would be?
Oh, I don't know if Elizabeth remembers, or Emily remembers offhand what that total was, but it was well over, I believe, well over 10%.
Yep, okay. Thank you. I just wondered.
In the current context without the DDA TIF, this would probably allow for, I think we anticipated maybe two significant projects to come through at this point in time with the gap.
And have we got anything that's looking at dropping off anytime soon?
I believe 2030 is really the next point in time in which we'll experience those caps coming off projects.
So if we go with a seven and a half percent cap, I know we're not locked into it, but theoretically, we would have two projects that we could promote in the next seven years.
Two significant projects. Granted, they could vary.
Or, yeah, got it. Thank you.
Where did the seven and a half come from?
A lot of the samples that we evaluated were around seven and a half, but primarily we saw 5%. So just in our review of outside policies, that was not in all of the policies that they cap the abatement they were willing to accept, but a portion of them did. We thought that put in a understandable perspective, the abatement that we're allowing as compared to the taxable value of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Section 3 moves on to the evaluation criteria. Essentially, a project's going to have to meet at least three of these criteria to even be considered for an abatement. These are the fundamental development priorities of the city that are later reflected in the scoring matrix. These include items like minimum investment, job creation, strong pedestrian features, mixed-use development, and remediation and preservation, and so forth.
So that's Section 2 though, Ashley, right?
Oh, is it Section 2? Yep, that's correct. I apologize.
Okay.
Ashley, before you go.
Yeah, do you want us to, do you want us to go through the whole thing, and then we go through it again, which might be the easier way?
However you prefer.
Want to read through the whole thing, and then we can ask?
Or go section by section? We can do that.
How about she reads through the whole thing, and then we go through it again, section by section? Would that be all right with everybody?
That would be, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Ashley, I'll shut up.
Nope, that's fine. Okay, where am I? So the next section is additional objectives. These are intended to reflect city values but allow for some greater flexibility and discretion within the council's decision-making process. So these additional factors are not reflected in the matrix, but again, generically allow for priority to be given to projects that reflect the city's evolving priorities and goals. As an example, that could be in reference to the master plan and economic development plan item. It could be the inclusion of sustainability and green infrastructure, local ownership, or year-round operations. Those items we continuously discuss at this level. We also, this is new, we implemented a tiered application fee structure. We found in a lot of the samples we were reviewing that they had significantly higher fees. We only have an EDC loan fee, so this would be relatively new for our group. We did tier it to try to accommodate for the smaller versus larger projects. These, again, are non-refundable fees to recover administrative costs. There are statutory limits. So ours that we ended up opting into was pretty in line with comparable municipalities, but on the lower end. Additionally, in the approval process, you can see the inclusion of an EDC financial review, an EDC board review. Presently, they're really only reviewing the brownfield, so this would be a little more inclusive for all abatements and incentives. The proposed scope of the financial review is still being finalized at the staff and EDC board level. So that's in progress, but conceptually, we all agree that we need to have the EDC or some capacity before it gets due, a certification of the financial demonstrated need. So that brings us to the matrix that's within the document that essentially compiles what we've discussed to this point into a scoring mechanism to give some guidance to not only you but the developer on what they might be able to expect, but obviously, we're not committed to. So some of these were pretty standard along all the examples we looked at. For example, capital investment. And we did look at all the incentives we've granted over the last couple of decades to try to gauge what the average project scope and size were to make sure these would be applicable to the types of projects that we've seen historically. So capital investment was something that's pretty standard in these types of policies. Job creation as well. Again, we are trying to accommodate that larger-scale expansion versus that, you know, small industrial retention or retail. I think, Elizabeth, I don't want to misquote the statistic, but a great majority of our business retention or creation is probably under five jobs. Is that correct? We also incorporated job wages on the scoring matrix to try to incentivize above-average wages. Thought that was important based on the state's minimum wage, again, standard throughout a lot of the policies we looked at. And again, to try to incentivize local ownership in some of those current industrial or manufacturing expansions or improvements, we did put a category in for a number of years located within the city. Number five on the matrix is what's going to be that more flexible category based on those development objectives listed earlier in the document. So for those of you at minimum had to score at least three of those to even proceed with your application, however, for additional categories you can cross off within those objectives, you could gather further And then it seems that we've had a lot of conversations about applications and having applicants seek funding, not only from the city but county, state, and federal sources, and how we could figure out how to incentivize or require that. We found in a lot of the examples we evaluated, they incentivized rather than required applications at the state level through, again, additional incentive at the local level. And then in conversation with our Housing Next partners, they assisted us in creating a category that would be more relevant to housing developments. That is, again, the percentage of units reserved for middle-income housing. So again, this section incentivizes housing that will be provided at affordable rates based on the area median income. So as an example, if 35%, your units are reserved for housing below 80% AMI, you may be able to receive 12 years based on that. And, sorry. In allocating numbers to these, we worked pretty diligently with our Housing Next partners to be intentional in the years we allocated for these categories so that it would actually incentivize a developer to not rid their project first of the affordable aspect. And then lastly, we just highlighting some of the notes at the bottom of the matrix. Again, just clarifying that these are general guidelines intended for consideration by reviewers, but in no way constitutes a promise of abatement or incentives. Again, just including that as often as possible. And then, again, we address layering of tax abatements incentives. So any one project is going to complete that matrix once, even if they're applying for multiple different incentives. So the year outcome you receive on that matrix is going to total basically the max incentive you could get. So for example, if you were to get 25 years but apply for two different types of incentives, you would have to then make a decision how many years of, say, an Oprah you wanted versus a Brownfield. You wouldn't be able to request max of both.
So you couldn't aggregate the different programs?
No. So again, you complete the matrix once, and that year allocation is your allocation for abatement and incentives. So that would naturally restrict some of the incentives we're providing. And then again, just clarifying where the AMI figure is based off of. And I think those are really the key points that we wanted to bring to your attention in the development of this policy. It's been through the EDC Board a couple of rounds. We've had some really fruitful discussion at that level. We have members of the EDC Board as well as the staff team that helped to put this together, present to help answer any questions you might have. But I think, again, outside of the basic policy, it's a philosophical conversation that we should have.
I'd like just to start by saying, this was a lot of work, and it has some great ideas in it. And it took me a while to pick my way through it, but once I did, I kind of went, we're very close. And I'd like to thank everybody who worked on it because I think they did an awesome job. And I'm not above stealing good policies from other places. And it sounds like you stole a bunch and amalgamated them in a creative way. I salute the work effort. I know that, how hard that is to set everybody aside to do that. I guess philosophically, I think there's, it's good to talk generally and then go back through it, or do you want to talk general, philosophically as we go through it? Because I marked mine up and have, I have some recommendations about some different things. But I'm guessing everybody has some version of that. So you want to just go page by page?
Yeah, I think we still have some questions. And you said we were going to go back through section after section?
Yeah, yeah. Is that all right? Okay. All right. On page four, which is where we're kind of starting, does that make sense? At least that's how it's printed for me, the economic incentive policy, the general policy guidance. I'm going to just throw in here that I didn't think this policy statement was very well-written. And I think it could be clearer, particularly when it talks about the purpose, the focused purpose. So I would like to see that, and I'm happy to help, but I would like to see it kind of cleaned up so it's clear to people who are looking at it, what the purpose of the programs is and the policy. So I don't know, did you guys have issues with the first page?
I think that's, you know, I think whatever comments people have, it should just go back to staff and then.
Well, that's fine. Okay.
If it makes sense.
Okay, how about page five, which is minimum requirements for tax abatements and incentives?
Right, Nick?
Go ahead.
Do you have questions? Oh, okay. I just wanted to get some clarification on a couple of these things. On item 1E, "The city will not ordinarily issue or be a signatory on bonds in connection with a tax abatement or incentive." Under what situations would we be?
I believe we used Grand Landing as an example. But there was some conversation at the EDC level that just because we couldn't predict the future, having a less committed language there, we had originally said the city will not issue or be a signatory on bonds in connection with tax payments. So we did have a little conversation around that. It was more of a commitment concern when we can't foresee what projects may come about or if the city may have interest. And again, maybe Grand Landing's not the success story for that.
No, I just thought that that would make us be a little more firm on that, that we would not, you know, we would not do that, especially given our financial situation right now, and knowing that in the future, you're going to be updating this on an annual basis. So if something does come up in the future and we want to soften that language, but I just wondered why we were leaving that open.
I think staff did have it, will not. And the EDC recommended that they leave some flexibility. And I ended up proposing not ordinarily. I mean, I agree, Karen, that it's, you could do it either way. And I think the intent is not to do it, but if there's an extraordinary situation where it's called for, it's not definitive.
I guess I see us as having a significant amount of debt, and we haven't even gotten into our, you know, the pension debt and the financing of that. I just don't see for the foreseeable future us doing any of that, you know, doing any of that. And if we did, we haven't done our job here, adding additional debt or, you know, from a bonding or being a signatory on any of that.
And I don't just.
We're just in no financial position to do that, given our, under, I can understand why you might want in the future that flexibility if we were in a much, much, much better financial position. But given what happened with Grand Landing and given our current, I don't think that's, I mean, I don't think it should be, just say, will not.
And I'm not opposed to that either. We did have a conversation that essentially 1H would really accommodate if there were some extenuating circumstance or desire at the time. There's enough flexibility within this document that council could ultimately make a decision. So I'm not opposed to modifying that.
I would agree with that, that I'd rather have a more firm expectation that we would not be doing that, at least not in the foreseeable future.
How about the others? Ryan, same?
Well, I kind of, what you raised, and we can maybe do that on a couple more pages. But I think as we go through this, it helped me to have the framework of how do we, how do we benchmark with some of the recent incentives that we've done? So do we benchmark pretty closely to what this policy would allow for? Or are we, you know, allowing for way more than?
I mean, I mean, this is a lot of standard language from a lot of the policies we looked at. So as far as benchmarking within other policies and communities, it's relatively in alignment with those. We did also, per the matrix, run through a number of projects that we've recently either had proposed or that are coming, that we had enough information to run the scenario. So we did a number of those throughout this process as well.
And they, and the, Ashley, the, but you didn't run like current projects, right? In other words, I shouldn't say current, past projects, like recently past projects. You didn't run any of those to see how the matrix would compare to what was actually given?
I think we did run a couple of the smaller industrial projects that we had proposed, some of those IFTs as an example, and then some of the coming projects that you've received applications for, just to benchmark where those might fall.
And how.
So not an extensive list of previous projects, but enough to at least see if it was tracking.
And did it look about the same? Did it look more conservative? Did it look more generous? Could you tell?
It seemed to trend a little more conservative. It's still permitting a number of years within abatements, but more conservative than the full incentives that we've been statutorily allowing.
Okay, that helps.
So on this tax change that Karen's recommending, Ryan, you're good with it? You think we're okay where we are? What do you think?
Yeah, I'm good either way. I think we have it out with H, so.
Yeah, I've gone over this already a couple times now, but yeah.
Just as a follow-up, I would love to see us take, you know, something like peerless flats or something that has happened in the past that has been called out by constituents as, you know, and comparing if we had applied this, what they would have received or been eligible to receive versus what they received.
I think that's a good idea.
We can, the next time it comes before you, we'll include a number of those scenarios.
Thank you.
That sounds great. It sounds like everybody else is okay either way, and Karen feels strongly. So Ashley, you can fix that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else in Section 1, guys? Okay. Section 2, this one I thought got very interesting. Because all of a sudden, you have to make decisions about what you value. And that is, we should be looking at what the community values, and I think that's good. Anybody want to lead off?
I think the one that probably stands out to me is to provide total investment of over 1 million or five full-time equivalent jobs. I would say provide investment of 1 million and at least five full-time jobs. I don't think that five full-time jobs equates to. I don't think that five full-time jobs equates to much of an investment, I guess. It depends on what type of job it is, but I have a hard time with that one.
Okay, that's good, that's good feedback.
And along those lines, can I ask, I was kinda wondering, okay, when you say full-time equivalent, like what is meant by that? Are we talking three part-time employees become one full-time equipment? Are we saying truly this is a full-time employee with full benefits and that's what counts? I mean, what is, how do we calculate a full-time equivalent? Or what are we considering a full-time equivalent?
The government's, you know, definition is the equivalent of whatever, 2,000 hour, you know, hours a year. It doesn't necessarily mean a full-time employee, full-time equivalent is not a headcount, like a, you know, it's, it's the calculation of the number, you know, of hours. So it doesn't necessarily bring benefits. Retailers typically have a lot of part-time staff, for example. And a full-time equivalent could be, as you, in your example, three people.
Right, so I think we, I mean, from a policy standpoint, what are we trying to incentivize? Are we trying to incentivize, you know?
I think it's gotta be defined.
I'll tell you, well, I'll tell you what, when I looked at this, you guys, what I would like to incentivize is a living wage. Because I think that that is, we're, we're in a situation where affordable housing is out of reach for people in a lot of the sectors. And so I talked to Ashley about this earlier. I said, I don't, I would like to say, if, if we're talking about creating jobs, it's, we're creating jobs that pay at the median wage for the, prevailing wage for the area. Or I know there's an economic term for it, but, but something that's the median wage. So that, that it, those are the jobs we're trying to incentivize. We're trying to incentivize skilled jobs, better paying jobs, benefited jobs, jobs that, if I am gonna put public tax dollars into something, that's where I would start with trying, trying to incentivize. I, I wouldn't necessarily think it's the same to create, even though it does raise the economy and the tax base, it leaves us in the same position where we keep creating jobs that, that don't pay enough for people to stay in the local area. And I, I guess if I'm looking to incentivize something, I'd rather incentivize something that pays better.
Yeah, no, I would agree with those sentiments. I mean, if there's any of these that are coming up that you guys were like, we, we talked about that. I mean, please, I would, I'd like to hear, I mean, did full-time equivalents come up as a conversation? Was it?
I don't know, and I think that's a great catch. I don't know that we necessarily defined full-time equivalent, so that's probably an important clarification. My guess would be most of the policies are probably the state definition, as Karen described. But that's not to say we don't wanna clarify that that's full-time, full benefit employees with a prevailing wage. That could certainly be added to further define that. We did have a little conversation, again, the, the tricky part about an inclusive policy is trying to capture those very small projects, like some of the tours we've completed earlier this year for incentive requests, as compared to a large-scale development, brand-new construction, new jobs, full expansions. So I think the, again, the, the five full-time equivalents in general, putting a number to it and having the or was to try to make sure some of those small investments may still be able to find a way to achieve three of those categories. So it was, it was a tricky part, so we decided to go with or. I think it was, it did start as an and, to Kevin's point.
It did? Interesting.
And I maybe, somebody can correct me if I'm misremembering that.
It was also changed in order to include residential, residential considerations for some of the points.
Yeah, I, I, can I ask a real quick question? When we say a million-dollar investment, okay, does that mean it costs them a million dollars to build it? Or does it mean that it'll, it builds a tax base of a million dollars? You see what I'm saying? Does, I mean, if a developer came in and spent a million dollars and put up three condos, and each of those condos is gonna sell for a million dollars, that's a, is that a three-million-dollar investment or a one-million-dollar investment?
So I, I believe to your point, it is that, that capital cost.
At what he puts in.
The increase in taxable value.
Okay, that's interesting. So I look at this million dollars that, if, if, million dollars without any jobs associated with it, and I look at that project in the first, first in Howard, right? Where they took, they, they took two old-style minimum building lots and managed to split them into three because we changed the zoning size, the, the, the building lot size for a few months, and they put up three duplexes, because we changed the zoning to allow duplexes, each of which is gonna, so they've got six, six what are gonna be million-dollar units up there, or pretty close, but didn't create any jobs. Would we, would we use public tax dollars to build million-dollar condominiums?
Well, and that is the tricky part, because we did evaluate very conceptually something like peerless flats, whereas they received a quite significant incentive or abatement to be, to invest in the site they're at now. We tried to find a way to navigate, again, allowing those residential developments a way to achieve eligibility. Again, it's going to be, each project's going to have to be evaluated very differently. So it's, it wouldn't rule out, to your point, that sort of project if they could meet a number of these other objectives to qualify.
Well, a, a major housing development would cost more than a million dollars, right? So it could be, Elizabeth?
Well, I just wanted to add, you know, with the peerless flats, that was a brownfield site. And so that's where a lot of those incentives came about. For a purely residential, if somebody's gonna build some condos, these, these incentives and abatements will not apply unless it's, if somebody's building a, you know, for, they're gonna, apartments, you know, multifamily for rent or lease, then you could, some of these abatement programs might start applying, but it's not just for residential.
Does it have to fit into one of those statutory bases before we can, before we give tax abatement?
Yeah, each, each of the, each of the, each of the Public Act has, has its own rules around it of what qualifies.
Okay, that makes sense.
And so, yeah.
That's a great point, sorry, I glossed over that. But yeah, there are prequalifications they would have to meet statutorily first.
This that you had.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Like, brownfields are covered by this proposed policy, correct?
Right. As are obsolete property districts and, and all the other ones we've been learning about.
A lot of them.
Okay, so, yep.
I just want a clarification. So the current abatements available, so the one, two, three, four, five that you list here, any project would have to qualify underneath one of these before we'd even look at it?
If, if they're ultimately applying for that program, yes. There is one, as an example, we're working with the EDC board right now to incorporate additional language into this document for EDC loans. That's obviously not necessarily a state program, that's more of a local incentive. So those will be added to the incentive list as well. But for those, you have to meet those statutory guidelines first, which is standard.
Tax abatement, it has to be one of the established statutory programs?
Yes.
Correct.
So we can't just arbitrarily do a tax abatement that's outside of these five?
I don't believe so.
I have just, I don't know Michigan laws.
Yeah, there's a number of state, you have to establish a district and notify the taxing jurisdictions and follow a number of different statutory guidelines. I don't believe you can arbitrarily create an abatement.
But in the past, to your point, we've had wide variety of what has come out, which is why they wanted to put a policy in place to get more consistency.
Sure, as far as the local requests, yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, a local request that comes through the EDC board, then, if I remember right, for us, it come in there for smaller loans and stuff like that, if we have available.
Okay, I wanted to look at, and I mentioned this to Ashley earlier, but I wanted to look at evaluation criteria number three, because I couldn't think of something. It says, provide for hospitality, industrial, residential, cultural, entertainment, and recreational uses. And I would, that seems to cover everything. So I, I didn't understand why that was in there, because if we're saying they have to pick three, they already got one, everybody has one. So I, and Ashley explained it to me, but maybe you could go through it again.
Yeah, and again, it may just be on our edge and oversight through a number of edits, but this has seen several revisions, at which point we've said, hey, what about industrial? What about residential? At which point we may have just gotten to a point where we're pretty all-inclusive and that may not be a necessary point to have within those evaluation criteria.
Well, it's a big thing if you eliminate it, because if you still need three and you eliminate it...
It would create challenge to score at least three of those.
But I'm not sure that would be bad, I guess. This is the place where I think we'd be giving them, if we're, if there are, I'm just going to say that is not, except that's a general investment objective. But it's not targeted to anything specific that, that the community is looking to foster, if that makes sense.
I think it was relatively important to residential developments, more or less, so we may find a way to modify that. Again, as we went through EDC, there are, again, a number of variations, at which point we realized kind of the, the missing market here for abatements was really those residential developments, something you might see like a Robinson Landing. So we made elect to, to edit that or modify it to more or less be a, a point option for residential development.
Can I, can I make a comment? Because I, I think that's a great observation on that, that one. But then it seems like on number 12 says, create, retain, or support industrial employment. So it kinda tips your hat if you're industrial. And then it also, you also have, provide outdoor uses such as dining, seating, recreation, which seems to hit hospitality. I don't know, there might be some sort of double dipping. The one that, one of the ones that doesn't kind of jump out is cultural, like museum or some other ki, you know, kind of use that might be a part of our...
Well, it does say restoration, renovation, or historic preservation.
But that's more of a building and a structure versus a museum, a cultural, you know, a cultural...
Right, but most of those are nonprofits that don't pay property taxes anyway.
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah, I don't think it needed in there, I don't think, but...
I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's a good point.
All these are just bullet points and that, that they have to hit. And when you're going back to the one where it's multiple, like the hospitality, industrial, residential, cultural, entertainment, and recreation, you gotta be careful, because there's some of the smaller units, we gotta make sure that we can take care of the smaller jobs that be able to help them out also.
If, if a museum though, let's just say theoretically a museum wanted to, someone wanted to build a museum and it was a charitable organization on land that the city owned. Let me think about this for a moment.
Then they got one point, cultural entertainment.
And they wanted the, yeah, they wanted the abatement of the taxes instead of paying taxes like lease, you know, from the, you know, the city. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I guess maybe that's where...
They have to follow a guideline for, to get the tax abatement for most of them. But the only thing it comes in for, it doesn't really come to, is when it comes to the EDC board, when it comes to us and that, and we capture X amount of dollars from that, comes in there so we can start promoting new growth and new investments in our town also. Good examples, like we helped the Unicorn Tavern with that. We had, gave them a loan to come through the EDC board, a smaller amount, that we doesn't have to come for it. And that's part of all the system here.
That, that wasn't my question. My question was really more on leased land from the city. And as I understand it, the lessees pay the property tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so if you're doing tax...
On the improvements, but not the land, right?
Uh, I think they pay it on the...
I believe they pay, for business-like activity, they pay property taxes.
Is this on city land or on private land?
On, there, it's leased land from the city. Let's just say Snug Harbor, Snug Harbor pays property taxes.
Yeah, pays property tax.
On the leased land from the city.
I don't think they pay it on the...
They do.
They do on the, on the real property too, or just the improvement?
She's, she's nodding.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
She's the lady who knows.
Anyway, I just throw that out as sort of a issue. I don't think you wanna double dip on that evaluation criteria. You might wanna look at some of those, you wouldn't wanna make it also too easy for someone to say, oh, here's the two out of three. But you don't wanna exclude anyone, certainly.
I wanted to ask about outdoor uses such as dining, seating, recreation, et cetera. And I, I guess my question is whether that is a, an economic development objective we wanna promote. And I guess I also think that, for instance, if you're a, a plant that puts picnic table out back on a patio so your guys can eat lunch, do you qualify? I, I'm, I'm a little leery about that one generally. As outdoor uses, something we want to promote with tax dollars. I mean, I think the natural bent of this community is get as much time outside as you can. And I'm not sure why we would wanna underwrite that, I guess is my question. Anybody got any reservations about that?
Probably right, I mean, why wouldn't that fall underneath? If, if we're gonna make three so broad, then why would we have to...
Why would you have six?
Why would you have six?
Yeah, I agree.
I, I would, I would counter a little bit to say, I mean, I do agree with you that we need to understand the intent here maybe is to, to build a factory and have outdoor seating for your employees and that counts. But I think when we talk about, like, most of these are incentivizing like smart growth principles and, and we're looking for, you know, a mix of uses. And when we talk about placemaking, you know, we want a, a mix of activities and things to do. And, and that could include, I mean, we could, you know, preserving, you know, some sort of natural environmental open spaces and incorporating those into seating areas and recreation. I mean, so there's, I think ways, I could see us wanting to incentivize mixed-use projects that have certain types of activities that are desirable to community members. But I do agree that, you know...
And then there's, but there's mixed-use projects already in here, Ryan, so I, I get what you're saying. I'm not, I'm not against it, I just think that that happens anyway, because that's the kind of community we are. So by making that one of the three things we're incentivizing, I, I'm not sure, I, I probably wouldn't. But like, a hundred percent agree with, include strong pedestrian features, all right, in design. I mean, that to me is the smart design place, but...
But okay, but if maybe the choice was between just simply a mixed-use building on a block versus a mixed-use building that gives you some outdoor recreational and open space, that seems more desirable than just simply having the mixed-use building. I think it provides extra incentive to provide some extra things that we may desire, but...
Okay, leave it in, leave it in?
I, I could see the rewarding and strengthening it, you know?
We can modify it.
Leave it in. All right, um, let's see.
No, no, but, but it's gotta be re, rewritten, because I agree with you. I, I don't, I think this is all wrapped up in three, but that's just me.
Yeah. Okay. Mixed use, everybody's good with pedestrian features, multiple stories conforming to current zoning. I mean, I ran through this, all right? We did a remodel of our house a few years back and I ran through this. And I could say, we did, we provided multiple stories conforming to current zoning. We included restoration of a historic building and we were residential property. And, and theoretically, I could have applied to the city and hit the three. I'm, I'm a little worried the three aren't, uh, uh, exclusive enough or, or judgmental enough? I'm not sure what the right answer is, but it...
But would you have fallen into any of these?
No, you're right, we wouldn't have fallen into any of those, so we'd have been okay. All right.
Yeah, same there.
All right. Okay, create, retain, or support industrial employment. This is a place where, what I was talking about in terms of wage parity, I think we could, we could add in there at a, at a wage level. I, I think that it will be, it will be controversial in the sense that some manufacturer comes to us may want to say, you know, I've, I've got a, I'm creating jobs that, that have career ladders, which is good. But I think we have a... But I think we have a shot when we do this to say, we're going to incentivize businesses that bring us living wage jobs and.
But you gotta define living wage.
Yes, but I think there's, there's a, there's a number for that. I mean, I, I would call it the, the median, uh, the median local wage. I mean, there's, there's, there's all kinds of data for that.
We just had a.
It's just a question of, go ahead, Mike.
We just had a company here that is a multinational company. They invested, I think it was close to, what, seven or eight million dollars in new equipment. They moved a lot of stuff from overseas and different places to Grand Haven. And we gave them, we helped them do that. And what they did was they created jobs and they're high-tech jobs. They were really good and it was, it was good. So that's, you gotta be careful when you're thinking about doing that, what you're, what you're talking about is that we need to help our industry if they want to come in, if they want to move more in here, this is going to help them a lot. This is what this whole program for is, is trying to get them to stay here and make it bigger and give good jobs. We just had, like I said, we just, I don't know if you were, you weren't on that at the time, Ryan, so. It was engine power components, if I remember correctly, when they came to, in front of us. And they moved some really high-tech equipment, you just, you just.
And brought jobs, right?
It brought jobs and it actually brought jobs.
And those are the kind of jobs we want to incentivize. That's, that's what I'm saying. Do we want to incentivize all jobs? That's what I'm asking. Or do we want to incentivize tech jobs that, that?
I want to help industry itself, period. It doesn't matter. I'd just like to help them so they can come in and create more jobs for us.
Does it matter which kind of jobs?
The jobs will come. I mean, what kind? We can't dictate to them what the jobs are.
Well, I'm not saying we would. I'm not saying we would dictate, but I'm saying we would incentivize bringing.
Or we can have them move out.
Jeez, Mike.
I mean, it, it, it's a small shop and they want to do it, but if you don't want to help them, they can always move.
Well, that's why, that's, that's why I'm putting it on the table.
I'm, I'm, I've worked through all this before. I just, these are just little bullet points that you gotta hit. I'm standing up for that part.
Okay. Elizabeth, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're crystal clear. So Mike, you are right in the past, you know, somebody like EPC brought in a bunch of that equipment. That used to be a part of the industrial, industrial facilities tax exemption. However, personal property has now been phased out. And so this, the, for industrial, it's a hundred percent real property right now. So just wanted to just kind of make sure that we understood that. But yeah, you were right. That's how it used to be.
But it could be one of the local plants is considering a expansion.
Yes.
A real property expansion.
Yes.
So the, the question is, is a legitimate question. And I get, Mike, we might disagree on this one. I'm, I'd be okay with that. I understand your position too. And I'm just putting it out there. We, we are continually bombarded by people who say our kids can't afford to live in this town. So if we're choosing as a, as a council to incentivize certain things in our economic development choices, I'm asking whether we want to incentivize higher-paying jobs over every job.
Over every industry?
Well, yes, yes.
Hospitality, industrial, residential, cultural.
I just think we need to be careful. I agree with Mr. Fritz. Need to be careful about being too prescriptive on, on that. I just wonder if this is the right vehicle to help reinforce the, the support. You know, maybe it's not in building it here. Maybe it's looking at other ways to incent employers. I'm, I'm concerned about that because if you're in industrial sector, you have line minimum wage jobs that kind of go up and then you have some middle management. I just don't know how you're going, you're going to get a bunch of attorney's offices? And I'm just trying to think of if you, if you set a middle-income wage, I, I don't know what kind of businesses you'll, you'll drive in here. I, I guess I'm, I'm not sure that that's, I, I understand what you're trying to do and I, I agree it's a value to help. I'm just not sure this is the vehicle to try to do it.
Anything, right?
Just my.
No, I, I think I, I, I'd be fine with, you know, staff and the team wrestle a little bit more with the mayor's point. I think, I, I think it's a fair question and, you know, at the point that we're allowing tax dollars to be retained by somebody making an investment, are, are we, you know? Yeah, what are we trying to incentivize? And is it the appropriate vehicle? I think that's a fair question too. But that's one that I'd be curious to kind of have staff at least wrestle with a little bit more.
I would too.
I see the, I see, I see both sides of that coin, so.
Okay, number 10, Kevin, did we end up at and? Or did we?
I.
You're at and.
I'm at and.
Same issue, guys? Does everyone agree and? Or tell me, Ashley, again, why you ended up at or? A million-dollar investment or five FTE?
It was a, again, because residential may not be including employment, but also to try to incorporate opportunity for some of the smaller efforts that may not, I think.
Make it a separate, then make it a separate. Make it 10A. If that's, if, if.
Well.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do, but I think it actually works, Kevin. Either or, if she's going to make a separate one, if you, you could make it 14, I guess. It's the same. If you put it, either this one or this one, or you put it in the, you just like it, you want it broken out.
Yeah, because it only, only.
Because it's different, it's a different.
Yeah, it's a different, I think it's totally different. I think investment and jobs are totally separate when it comes to stuff like this. If you're trying, trying to do this because of the residential side, then I can understand why five jobs would be probably all you're going to get out of a, out of a typical residential development. I can understand that. But I don't think it should be.
Can you break that just into a separate bullet? Ashley?
Yeah.
Is that, that?
Yeah, if that's okay with everybody else.
I think everybody would be okay with that. Okay. So to me, the next question would be.
Or I guess the other way, way to look at it is, do we need it there at all considering that there's, it's actually in the matrix? Your actual capital investment amounts, you know, how many full-time equipments?
What's in the matrix is derived from these, Ryan, isn't it?
Well, I get that that's the gatekeeper, but, but you're also getting an extra year depending on if you hit three of these, so. Or you're getting a, a year. So if you hit three development objectives, okay, there's a year that you're getting, so.
A year.
Just raising it. I mean, I don't, I guess I have a strong feeling either way, but.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm good either way, but I guess I'd leave it broader. How about, guys, is there anything you want to incentivize that you didn't see in here?
This is probably, you said we're going to review this every year, Karen was saying that, is that what the intent is? Okay. So I mean, obviously, we're going to discuss a community energy plan tonight. There may be some, you mentioned it, sustainability objectives that we may really want to incentivize depending on the outcome of that. But I'm willing to hold off and wait till we have a little bit more solid data.
I mean, you don't want to put LEED certified or some version of that?
Well, you know, I, I think that we could, but.
Even a placeholder.
I don't think you need it.
It, it may be good to, just to get, get some further information on that and.
Okay. How about additional objectives?
Well, I was just going to jump in. I see on your abatement incentive guidelines, you know, you went deep on the new job wages in terms of the average wa, wage being two times, two and a half times, or three times, and then the years, the tax abatement. So you have thought through to the next level on the wage incentive beyond what the policy has said.
Yeah, we didn't necessarily make it exclusive if you did not have above average or at least the minimum wage. However, we did incentivize higher wages.
I'm okay with that.
Anything else? I think we need to, we're going to need a break, guys, and maybe take a five-minute break. Is that all right?
Okay.
Because we're going to need to come back in and start the regular meeting. And then we'll go through the rest of it.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Meeting's adjourned. And we'll be back in place in five minutes. Regular city council meeting of August 21st, 2023 is hereby called to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Fritz?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
McLaughlin?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
McNally?
Here.
The invocation tonight, tonight will be delivered by the Reverend Tim Blackman of Second Christian Reform Church. Would everyone please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Almighty God, from whom all thoughts of truth and peace proceed, kindle we pray in the hearts of all people the true love of peace and guide with your pure and peaceable wisdom those who take counsel for this city. We ask your blessing on our mayor, Catherine McNally. And we pray that you would give the members of this city council the spirit of wisdom and understanding, a mind set on charity and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Bless our city with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure conduct. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way that we may live in this city to which you have brought us in tranquility and peace. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness. And in the day of trouble, help us to trust in you, all of which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, for those of you who were watching the work session earlier, we've made an executive decision to schedule a second work session so as not to push you through an hour of further review of our new economic development policy. That being the case, looks like we're going to move to new appointments to boards and commissions. And I would entertain a motion to, actually, will you read them first, Maria?
We have two new appointments, Bryce Bergman, Compensation Commission, with a term end of December 31st, 2026, and Paul Vandevus, Compensation Commission, December 31st, 2024 is the term end.
They'll move.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Call the roll, please, Maria.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. I'm going to make an announcement here that I need one further person for the Compensation Commission. So if there's anybody out there listening, either in person or, or online who isn't already sitting on some board or commission, please get in touch. Okay. Could use a motion to approve the consent and regular agendas.
They'll move. In second.
Any discussion? Maria, please call the roll.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
Moving right along, we're at the call to the audience, one of two opportunities. At this time, members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing council are asked to provide their name and address and will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Council will hear all comments for future consideration, but will not have a response at the time. Those not physically present who would like to may call in at 616-935-3203. If it continues ringing, please remain on the line until your turn. We will take all callers. Is there anyone who would like to address council?
Doug Vance, 100 Washington. Not here to talk about parking. I've given up on that for this year since you folks are going to do nothing. Tenants, who are also residents of the city, by the way, they do vote. However, I'm looking at, you know, how do we stay in business? And, you know, just having to look at my tax bill this year before I paid it. And there is a, there are a couple of items on there. One is a, a fee of $1,749 that we get charged for the privilege of doing business downtown. The second one that was on here that I didn't understand, it says single lot, it's $2,200. Emily Green was nice enough to give me a pile of information. I really appreciate the work she did to do that for me. But in that, I was told that, well, you never paid your snowmelt invoice from last year. Well, it didn't come to me. It went to my, the guy that owns the property that I'm leasing it from with an option to purchase. He never forwarded it to me, so this year's is $1,900. He never forwarded it to me, so this year's is $1,900. So I'm assuming there is late fees and stuff tacked on top of that. However, let's talk about the snowmelt system for just a minute. There are two properties that are benefiting from the snowmelt system that I know of. There may be more. I haven't investigated the whole thing. The ordinance that was passed back in whatever says that the billing of the operational costs associated with the downtown snowmelt utility system will be billed to those property owners who receive its service. Doesn't say from Arbor Street 3rd. It says to those property owners who receive its service. That's what the ordinance says. There are two properties that are receiving its service. I guess the reality is, we could say the entire town is receiving its service the way it's written. However, I'll go with, we're just gonna get the people that are, that own businesses downtown. In addition, when this was first put together, there was a $6 million cost to put the system in and the downtown business owners were allotted, just did a quick figure, about 13% of that cost was billed to the business owners. City paid the rest. But then, when it came time to do maintenance, you flipped it. It's, well, the city's gonna pay 25% and the business owners are gonna pay 75%. I don't know why that was switched like that, but it is, I mean, the cost of the snowmelt system, and I'm sorry about the timing here, but, you know, if you look at the cost of the snowmelt system, it is going up and up and up and up. Let's turn the thing off. It's getting way too expensive. We're trying to make enough money that we can keep our businesses open, keep people employed, and the costs just keep going up. They aren't being allocated properly, number one, but number two, if you look at the figures here, you know, it started out, you know, at $70,000, then it dropped. In 2017, it was only $23,000. Now we're up to $106,000.
Doug, I'm gonna have to cut you off at this point, but I appreciate your comments.
I think you folks should look at this. I mean, it's killing us. It's killing us.
Good evening. It is painful.
Steve, could you state your name for the record?
Name and address.
And your address?
Yes, excuse me. Steve Miller, 1540 Panoyer Avenue. It is painful and stressful for me to appear before you once again. I have contacted the city in both documented and undocumented ways more times than I can remember to express my concern for the majestic Heritage Elm at 223 Howard Avenue. I also met with a representative of DPW at Starbucks sometime. I asked the representative what steps the city is taking to preserve the elm tree. I'm still waiting for answers. I am a respectful and concerned citizen who has gone through a great deal of turmoil to protect a city asset of immense value. I wish to know in complete, specific detail, what the city intends to do to protect the elm. This is not a difficult question to answer. Why is this critical information delayed? I know many people personally who care about this tree. I have done my homework on this topic. I have to wonder if DPW has done its homework. What I do know for sure is that Howard Avenue will be completely ripped up and widened four feet. As it stands, the critical root zone of the elm will be torn asunder and the remaining root ends will be brutally ripped apart into countless splinters. All of this will cause root rot that will put the tree into a slow death spiral. All of this could have been prevented if the city had shown enough sense to hire a certified arborist to consult with them at the beginning of the project. Is it ethical to leave me, an engaged citizen, twisting in the wind with no response? In fact, I have to ask if this long pattern of silence surrounding the Howard Avenue project is even legal. I continue to be left empty-handed with no reliable information about the elm. Now we are dealing with triage and time is of the essence.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Moving on, we've got a presentation this evening by the Historical Conservation District Commission recognizing a local landmark. Lisa Dora, Chair of the Commission, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lisa Dora, 501 Friant Street. I currently chair the Historic Conservation District Commission. Thank you for this opportunity, for the HCDC to present you with a local landmark designation for the former historic police and fire department building located at 1820 North Fifth Street. Can you hold the first, that's the last slide? Okay, thank you. The Historic Conservation District Commission approved an application for the local landmark designation from the City of Grand Haven at their meeting on August 16th, 2023. The HCDC unanimously agreed that the structure, rich in history, reflects the elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history. The former historic police and fire department building is an excellent example of early 20th century colonial revivalism that became popular in this era and is a contributing structure to the National Register of Historic Places within the central historic. The former historic police and fire department building was dedicated on September 28th, 1936, with all the fanfare, as part of President Roosevelt's New Deal. Both City Hall and the Police and Fire Department buildings were built by the WPA in 1935 and 1936. The Police and Fire Department building anchors Central Park and the Civic Center within Grand Haven's downtown historic district boundaries. Designed and built at the same time as City Hall, in the same style, and using the same well-known Grand Rapids-based architect. This local landmark designation status is another fine example of our commission's dedication to the preservation of our rich local history. Some benefits of the local landmark designation include marketing and tourism, increased awareness of local history, historic plaques and markers, and inclusion in future walking tours. Interested in applying for local landmark designation? The local landmark application is currently being revised to offer a more user-friendly approach to applicants and will be available soon online from the Grand Haven's website at www.granhaven.org. You may also call the city manager's office at 847-4888 for questions or to email your application very soon. The members of the HCDC are honored to present the mayor, council, and all of the residents of Grand Haven with this certificate of recognition as a historic site and this local landmark designation plaque that reads, it's very heavy, hang on a second. Historic landmark as designated by the Grand Haven Historic Conservation District Commission.
All right.
It's beautiful. I have to say, they work really fast. Ten weeks ago, we had a meeting where we said, sure, we should do this. Now, here we are. The Sablon Building, Sablon someplace, but thank you for protecting the historic and architectural heritage of our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Do you have to install it, too?
I have a drill, so probably I could do that. That part I could do. Okay, let's see.
Other duties are assigned, as they say, right?
I think that's how it works. I'm pretty sure they wouldn't let me near it, though. It's historic, after all. All right, we are at the consent agenda. I'm gonna ask Maria to read it. Entertain a motion to approve it.
Consent agenda, item A, approve the regular council meeting minutes of August 7, 2023. Item B, approve the bill's memo in the amount of $2,436,523.37. C, recognize Soup for All, Inc., DBA Homeless Prevention Partners as a nonprofit organization operating in the City of Grand Haven for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. D, recognize Bras for a Cause Lakeshore, Inc. as a nonprofit organization operating in the City of Grand Haven for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. E, appoint Derek Gatos as officer delegate and Carla Tenhoe as employee delegate to the 2023 MERS Annual Conference. And F, approve the purchase of four Public Works F-250 replacement trucks at the not-to-exceed price of $189,440 from Lunghammer Ford of Owasso, Michigan.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Fritz, second by Lo. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. Would you read item A for us, please, Maria?
Consideration by city council of resolution to accept the proposal for Michigan Energy Options and Five Lakes Energy for the completion of a community energy plan in the not-to-exceed amount of $99,815 and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Administration recommends approval.
Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lo, second by McLaughlin. Any discussion?
Well done.
There was, there was just a little bit of discussion on there that Mr. Kinch was actually running for. And it might be a little bit of conflict in there, but he reassured everybody that it would not be a conflict for him to do that, to move forward with it. And also, there was, it was a three to two vote and it was like three abstentions. They didn't want to vote on it at that time.
So it was, so it was a three to two vote plus two abstentions?
Three. I think it was three, and it decided they wanted to abstain from it.
Was there?
But it did pass three to two.
Okay. This is the culmination of?
Just so I'd let you all know what happened at that meeting.
That's good, Mike. It's a culmination of extensive effort by the Sustainability and Energy Commission and it is going to be a community energy plan based on the BLP Service District, partly funded by the city, partly funded by a couple of, I think the Community Foundation had a piece of it. I heard the Loudet Foundation had a piece of it. And the City of Farisberg has bought in and I think we are hopeful at this point that the, potentially, Grand Haven Charter Township and potentially Spring Lake Township, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, are also going to finance a piece of it. And the idea is that it will look at us, our carbon footprint as a service district for the BLP and will attempt to find ways both to conserve energy and also perhaps ways to increase the amount of sustainable energy we're using. So I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think that a lot of people worked hard to bring it to fruition. I, I, I get the, I think the group generally considered John Kinch's organization the best of the choices to do this. I think there was some concern about the potential for conflict of interest and I think that he'll manage that if it comes, if he's elected and if it comes to, to an issue. But from what I understood, there was consultation with a city attorney who said it's doable so long as there's some separation of roles. So I don't have any questions about the, the, Mike, do you want, you got anything else you want to say?
No, out of all the groups, he was actually the one that had less staff time, which I looked at mostly is that our staff is stressed as it is already with many opportunities, the things that they're doing today, that this one here was gonna take and do most of the work and our staff is not gonna be as involved as some of the other ones. Some of the other ones had a lot more staff work. They wanted us to do a lot of the groundwork for them. Plus, being a local guy, it's really nice to have someone local to dive into it and have his own personal into it, you know, so it's good. I think it'll work out fine for us.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to mention, there's been a huge, huge effort over a very short amount of time by a number of individuals on the, on the RSEC who, and then who ultimately became a core part of the steering committee. And to be honest with you, I had a hard time keeping up with these guys. We met no less than five times in about six or eight weeks. That was reviewing a ton of proposals. I would say, in addition to the meetings that I attended, I probably spent about 40 hours outside of that reviewing costs, comparing, you know, details. And at the end of that, even though I was not one of the ones that voted, because I missed the last meeting where the decision was made, I would have voted for this, this option for just some very simple reasons. One, the costs were not all comparable that you see on that front sheet. Some of them excluded the fact that some of those organizations were not from out of town and the expenses were not included. So those were not to exceed prices but did not include some substantial expenses. One of the organizations, Blue Strike, was eliminated. They were out of California. You know, but one of the main reasons, just in looking at the content, cost, quality, inventorying our energy level consumption, baselining the carbon footprint, the years of data, the modeling, I have to say that the MEO, Five Lakes, you know, methodology and the rigor of their analysis was extremely impressive. They were very familiar, more familiar with some of the new MSPC guidelines and how that might affect some of these things. The hours that they spent here locally, and this was very important, I know, to my fellow council member Fritz, the amount of time that they were gonna spend locally and communicating versus working remote. I think there were project managers from Canada and from other places on some of the other teams. These guys were Michigan, Michigan-based, Michigan, you know, local, and gave us a lot of confidence that they were going to honor, honor that and be committed to this. This, this, and finally, I guess, one of the things that put it over the edge for me was their final deliverable in the community energy plan appeared. They got that it would, we needed something that, for all of our communities, that would position us to help fund some of the actions that came out of it. And they were well aware that that's what we would need to do and that this plan would, you know, they would, they were familiar with where we might be able to go for some of that funding. So I think all in all, I'm, you know, I'm all on board with. So I think all in all, I'm, you know, I'm all on board with the, the selection, feel comfortable that the steering committee has done their due diligence.
And they, they did have a lot of very fruitful conversations along the way. In case you haven't noticed, I'm sure you have, Mr. Kinch is also in the audience if you have any additional questions specific to the proposal.
Okay. Does anybody want John up here?
I just want to say one thing. I want to tell everybody that was on the committee with us, I want to say thank you for putting all your hard time into it, because as Karen alluded to, it was a lot of involvement there. It's more than just sitting at home and coming, showing up. There's a lot of, you have to read a lot, there are all these proposals and that, so I want to thank each and every one of the members that were on that board. Thank you for your hard time and your, your input on it. It all helped a lot, so thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for their work. There's clearly a lot of collaboration that, that's occurring here amongst multiple folks and communities, and grateful for all of the committee and Ryan Cotton and their work and fundraising, a lot of dollars to, to make this happen, and the generous support of the Community Foundation and the Lotta Foundation. We've been talking about a community energy plan for, for some time now, and here we are kind of ready to, to take that next big step. So I appreciate the subcommittee's work. It sounds like, Mike, that you guys had a lot, Karen had a lot of meetings, and I can tell you had a lot of reading, because we had a lot of reading. So it's for, it's well qualified, and I trust the committee's recommendation.
Call the roll, Maria.
Low?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
Okay, new item, new business, item B. Maria, would you read it for us?
Consideration by City Council of a resolution to apply for 2023 Michigan Community Center Grant in the amount of $1,367,145, the local match of $151,905 for facility upgrades and improvements to Central Park Place and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Administration recommends approval.
Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Shar here.
She is.
Yep, I don't, I don't think we need any discussion. I think we understand what it is, but maybe it wouldn't be a bad thing to let people understand what the purpose of the, we've got, the state of Michigan has put out $60 million in potential grants for community centers throughout the state, and we are applying for a one and a half million dollar, actually, I think ours is 1.35 million dollars, and we're gonna, we're gonna match it with some matching funds in an effort to do some capital improvements to our community center. So Central Park Place, sorry. I know I need to get that straight. And I think it's a great idea. I'm hopeful we'll get it. Ashley, you got anything for us?
Just adding for the, the public's sake that, again, we've been really cautious bringing forward grants that may impact the general fund, and this one was especially appealing to us in that a number of these projects were already within our capital budget, so that brought our match down a little bit, as well as there is, we did have a dedicated millage to capital improvements for this facility that has since fallen off, but that fund does still have a balance. So this is an incredible opportunity for us to maximize the, the funding that exists for that. Those improvements, and especially with a building where utilities are roughly $80,000 a year to do some of those efficiency improvements, not only in those larger capital improvements, but we expect long-term savings from those as well.
I'd just like to say that it is totally consistent with any community energy plan. We, there were energy upgrades in that, significant ones, that I thought was kind of a nice match for this council meeting. Mike, did you have something?
No.
Nope? All right. Everybody good? Call the roll.
Well, actually, I thought we were going to discuss a little bit.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. I got, if we were to approve anything, I guess I'm not, I'm not totally against this for obvious reasons, because it's energy efficiency. I just didn't think we were done as a city council rationalizing our real estate and how much real estate and which pieces we think we need to own in the future versus since we, I think we agreed a meeting or two ago that we were terrible landlords. So, I don't know, I just, I wanted to put that out there, because it sounds like there is a lot of support for this. Is it because council, fellow council members feel like we should keep it, or are we trying to be opportunistic? Has that decision already been made in all of your minds? Because before you make an investment, especially given our financial?
And begin again? Kevin?
I, I know where Karen's coming from, and something that we've all discussed is, you know, it's just something that we, we want to, I don't know, continue to, continue to own. I guess my, my only question is, with these improvements, will it help us with the deficit? If all this happens, what will it do to increase the revenue into this building?
I, I don't have a specific number for return on investment, but I can say especially the HVAC and lighting improvements will provide significant cost savings to this facility as far as those utilities go. And again, additionally, that outlying capital obligation we have as far as those other improvements. But I think those more intrinsic, the audiovisual, the kitchen equipment to make it a functional kitchen on the, the top story, those will make it very appealing for renters. It's a consideration we've heard time and time again from users of the facility. I think, again, this, at, at $150,000, I don't think this is going to necessarily put us in a poor position regardless of what council would decide to do long-term. Again, I think these improvements as far as accessibility, carpet replacement, furniture and AV and all those utility controls, I think those provide great value to the overall facility.
How much of?
Chris Feller.
How much of the 150,000, did you say you thought we already had from a budget perspective?
I believe it was maybe over 50? Oh, 100%?
100%.
I suppose, yeah.
And then if we receive this grant, is there any restrictions then on how long we have to operate as a community center?
So the, the guidelines set out by the state did not necessarily put any parameters on that at this point. We can inquire further. I, I don't think there were any strings attached. It was especially to, within that state budget to accommodate, again, some of those lost revenues post-COVID for these types of facilities and the service that they provide communities. So at first review of the application, and I don't know if Shar agrees, I didn't see any ties or restrictions they would place on the, if we were to use the funding.
Just wanted to make sure it's not like the FAA, and we have so many years that we have to, you know, keep it, keep it as such. I don't think we've made any, you know, decision. I just didn't, you know, want to. So, I mean, I am, I could go along with this, provided that we have the, you know, the funds are already covered in terms of our, our piece of it.
I think as a matter of fairness, if we continue to operate this, we need to continue to, and then if, if you get to a point where you're going to say, we're not going to do that anymore, you take the building as it is, and, and, but I don't think we've been served well over the years in the city by neglecting reinvestment in buildings. So if we get a shot at this, it's a, it's extremely generous opportunity, and I think we should take it, for what it's worth.
By far, if we can get money back from the state or from the federal government at that kind of, that kind of rate is so much better.
Yeah, to improve the community.
And plus, it's improving the building itself. If you, I think in each and every one of us has looked at the bills and seen what the heating and the cooling is for it over there. If you know, if you ever take a tour of it, take a tour once and see how old the, the facility that it's actually running, HVAC that's running over there.
I'm kind of hoping John Kinch is going to put solar panels on the roof, I'm just like.
That's a, that's a good suggestion. We got a, we got a, we got a live roof over there we can walk on, it's all over, we never used. But, in the meantime, but this is going to be a good investment for us, I think, you know, probably, I don't think it's going to be a long term, but I think you'll get some payback on it before you know it, to be honest with you.
I agree. Okay, anything else? Call the roll, please, Maria.
Fritz?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
Okay, unfinished business, item 12. Would you read it out loud, please, Maria?
Consideration by City Council of a final resolution to execute a lease extension with Snug Harbor Company, 311 South Harbor Drive, extending October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2033, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Administration recommends approval.
Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And is there support? Okay, discussion?
Just a reminder, especially for the public as well, that this is more or less a formality per the charter leases have to have two readings, so we did discuss this a month ago.
Yeah. Okay. Maria, please call the roll.
Fritz?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McNally?
No.
Okay. Report by City Council. You can volunteer to start.
No, I'll start.
Okay.
No.
Let's see, Walk the Beat, man, what a fantastic thing that was. I could not believe the turnout that was out there, it was unbelievable. And all the time I was walking, I made like three rounds, three rounds, because I want to hear all the bands, you know, I like music a lot. But in my walking there, the suggestions you were making is that we close off Seventh Street for Flea on Seventh, and that there should be able to close off some of the blocks. It would be nice, because it's really a hazard for these people getting back and forth across the street there. We might, we, something that public safety might want to look at, take a look at it, maybe closing off and having some side streets going straight across. But there's so many people out there, it's such a great day, it was fantastic, so I, I enjoyed it 100%. And the sidewalk sales, it was, it was, it was definitely a chamber of commerce weekend for them, because it worked out really good this weekend. Art on the Waterfront, that was fantastic. Pedro's Pig Roast. Councilman Cummins and I were out there, and I tell you what, what a great turnout. It was for a great cause. It was, I mean, you had two pigs and chicken and brats and hot dogs and you name it, man, it was just unbelievable. People were just enjoying the beach out there, and anybody, anybody and everyone could come if they wanted to, it was there. So I want to say thank you to Pete Stalzer, who does that for us. It was really, really good. Free Friday concerts, I want to tell a thank you to the group that's been putting them on for us. That's been a fantastic turnout. The last one's just coming up on this Friday, and hopefully we can have them again next year. If anybody has any extra money or something, want to donate to something, it's such a great cause to see our whole community come out there and just sit there and enjoy music, so. Other than that, Tigers, well, they're, they're the Tigers.
Of course. Just to follow up on Councilman Fritz, the mayor and I were at a transportation meeting this week, and actually, I went to one of the DOT representatives, and I, because it's a state highway, couldn't we, in fact, close that? And he says, absolutely you can. We have to fill a permit out, just like somebody had to fill the permit out for us. But I think it's something that we should, as a city, and maybe the Walk the Beat organization, put something together and submit it to the state, because I think, I agree with the council. I mean, it was, it was packed, and it's, it is, somebody's going to get hit. I mean, it's just a matter of time. And if we're going to do that, then we should wrap in some type of social district. I think some of our restaurants did a wonderful job in trying to control the alcohol that was on the street, but some of them didn't. And I think we should, we should really consider, if we're going to make this a yearly event, I think we should do it right. And it is, it was, and I, I agree with you, it was, it was a great event, and I just want to make sure that we, we keep building on it, because it's something that I think is great for this community.
Karen?
Nothing to add. I thought great events this weekend in particular, the Walk the Beat was just phenomenal two weeks ago. Thanks.
Brian?
Yeah, I'll echo what Kevin and Mike said. I, I think it's, we've had just a ton of events over the last couple of weeks, and really all summer, and, you know, it's the extra things like that that make Grand Haven a, a great destination and place to live and, and, you know, we just really can't thank the event organizers enough either. I know events are a ton of work to plan, there's a lot of risks involved, a lot of it's volunteer work that, that folks are putting in because they, they want to give back. So really, you know, thank you to all of them for their work, and I'm happy to continue supporting our events as we go forward, so.
I just have a couple things. I gave a, an address at the Rotary Lunch on last Monday on the State of the City, which was a nice group of people, good values and good fundraisers for our community. And I pitched our, as worthy causes, Boardwalk renovation that I'm told by Ken Formsmann is happening in the spring, and also our forest management plan. I just said, if you're looking for someplace to send some Rotary dollars for a local, that would be a great place to start. Also, I went to the Y camp, I spent, I went to, it wasn't sleepaway camp, I'm happy to say, but I spent a morning with the local YMCA and saw their kids' camps, their daycare, their adult swim classes, and a variety of other things that, that it's really a vibrant place and has a lot of local support. And they're doing a major capital campaign, trying to raise $10 million, and we got a, I got a pitch on that as well. So anybody's looking for other places to put philanthropic, philanthropic dollars, the Y is certainly a great asset to our community. I thought Kevin, when he was talking about closing the street for Walk the Beat, I thought he was going to talk about the, the big news that came at the meeting we, the transportation meeting we were at. US 31 is going to be closed for three weeks in September, northbound and southbound, and I'm trying to get that word out. I think the details are on our website. I asked the staff to send it out to the radio stations and the TRIB, but they basically are replacing a major culvert near Van Wagner Road, and they're going to have it detailed and, or detoured around, but I think at least it'll be closed for three weeks, and then they'll, and they'll have lane closures before that and, and work being done after it. So if you have to get into Muskegon, I think the fall's going to be a rough patch, so that's all I got. Ashley?
And the, the dates on those closures are anticipated September 13th through the Just a reminder, we do have our second community town hall tomorrow at the, at Central Park Place from 6:00 to 8:00 to review issues related to Harbor Island, including sampling results to date, in addition to some of the activity we expect to see in the next six to eight months. So that'll be, again, Central Park Place tomorrow, 6:00 to 8:00. And just again to highlight, we do anticipate doing our annual bridge walk. It's hard to believe September is coming up, but that'll be September 4th, 9:00 a.m. as usual. That Labor Day Bridge Walk starts on the Third Street Bridge and extends out to the end of the pier and ends back at the Waterfront Stadium, in which we'll have our usual abundance of giveaways and post-walk snacks.
Something to look forward to. Okay, that it? We are actually going to go into closed session rather than adjourn the meeting, but before we do that, don't worry, Maria, I got it this time. But it's good to worry generally. We're going to do the second call to the audience. So at this time, members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing council are asked to provide their name and address, and will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Council will hear all comments for future consideration, but will not have a response at this time. Those not physically present who would like to may dial in at 616-935-3203. Anybody who needs to address council? Okay, then I would take a motion, I need a motion, right, to, it's consideration by City Council to go into closed session to consider a periodic personnel evaluation pursuant to Section 81A of the Open Meetings Act as requested by the employee. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved, second.
A motion by McLaughlin, second by Fritz. Any discussion?
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
Thank you all. Oh, John, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Congratulations.